Yes, okay. Hello everyone, I'm Aky Pasulas, I'm a reader here, a reader of music here at the University of Kent, the at the Department of Music and Audio-Technology. So today's programme is part of a series of events run by a oral pluralities and oral pluralities is a research network led by academics and creative practitioners dedicated to extend upon the oral diverse turn in the arts and humanities research. Throughout twenty twenty five we run events at Goldsmiths, University of Sussex and University of Kent. The events are curated by Alice Eldridge, Helen Frossey, Iris Garloffs, John Leverd River and myself and they are supported by CHASE which stands for Consortium for the Humanities and the Arts South East England. In today's event we are presenting three sound works, maybe four, we'll see how it goes, composed by Konstantinos Damianakis, John Driver and myself. All works have been some connection with water, hence the title of the event Hydrosonics. The compositions will be diffused live through the Music and Audio Arts Sound Theatre that you can see behind me. And those of you who listen online please wear headphones to be able to experience binaural sound. Each composer will briefly introduce their piece and then perform it, but I think Konstantinos has a presentation as well to do beforehand, so voice is fine. I mean we'll just improvise as we go. And when we play the piece after that we will follow this with an informal discussion between us and if you have any comments or questions, you people online you can just type it on Youtube and then we can we can discuss that as well. There will be a short break between each presentation, we say fifteen minutes, but we'll see somewhere around that. And those people in here if you need food and drink there is the wagon stop canteen almost opposite the clock tower, so you need to go through that. So thank you very much, let's start with Konstantinos. Thank you very much.
Hello everyone, thanks so much for the invitation and thanks Helen for and the oral plu- pluralities network for organising this. Um can I open my file?
Oh yes, of course. Let me carry that. Um should be here.
Seven.
This one, yeah.
So so this is uh the title of my piece is Seven Thirths and One Long Sound Signal or written um with this uh symbols. And um I wrote uh it's a response to a poem by the Greek northern eastern poet Erzis Soteropoulos, the poem is called Man Overboard which um yeah and before I talk about the poem, the form of the piece is basically the this symbol as it's composed of units, each of which is composed of seven units, of seven units like uh like kind of fractal and um it takes uh then th- this composes a drone, it lasts around thirty minutes. And um the poem is called Man Overboard which is um the name of this drill uh where in um for the case where in a ship there's uh someone at uh who have fallen out of the ship and uh the poem starts with this uh with this poem. It is imperative that whoever sees a person falling shouts, man overboard. Someone must keep watching and under no circumstances and for no reason look away, not even for a moment, always pointing towards the drowning. And um this poem was written um by Erzis Soteropu Soteropoulos uh after her mother's death where when Konstantinos took a trip to the Arctic Circle and um she had an experience visiting the glaciers where she empathised in a way while listening with the glacier to to an event of glacial calving and in this case this listening experi- experience um resonated with her processing of grief and sense of personal emergency and in a way it resonates with this between uh personal scale and planetary scale of emergency and grief, which is quite uh funny. Um and this is the part of the poem where the ending of the poem which reads, only you and I are now listening, there isn't anybody else. The creaking of invisible crystals of glacial floored calving. With our breath blocked we are listening to the creaking becoming drowning. The roar of an airplane approaching, not from above. That mineral drowning as a fragment detached is from the mother. And uh this kind of fragment of the poem um motivated the compos- the composing process and um I I maybe propose that listening in that case can be viewed as an amniotic confluence between bodies of water, between the poet and the glacier or an intersubjective relation between two animate beings, so these are some ideas and composition. Um and I have a a video of actually of glacier glacial calving in case you're not uh you don't have an um to have an idea, to give an idea of how it sounds, how it looks which is kindly provided by the poet. So yeah, this video was uh filmed by photographer Leonard Seussmann and uh was also projected in the presentation of the book in Athens in Greece. And um I did not try to mimic the sound, but it ended up uh the composition ended up uh uh resembling it quite a lot. Um it's like listening to a glacial calving maybe through an octaphonic broken telephone, subphone. And um also I want to talk about how uh my contact with the poem after reading it. I was um I transl- I'm still translating it, also in close communication with the poet and um so basically the compositional process was entangled with translation and um I was thinking of this translation also as a pro- process of transduction and um I was interested in this compositional process doc um described by Clipping who along with River Sullivan um com- uh made uh Clipping made an album and River Sullivan made a novel uh following the noise that comes with the transduction of the mythology of Drexia. And and kind of this way of composing by an iterative process that and amplifying the noise signal, whether that is the the poem translated from Greek to English and this kind of how these ideas are mutated and when they exist from different media. Um and this is uh a map of the transa- the transactional topology of of the piece um with sensation produced in the glacial calving uh which inspired the poet to write Man Overboard which then I was uh in the process of translating to English and then I took the English tr- translation draft to sessions of Subphonics which is a a sound art collective I'm a part of and we um we did long improvisations as a response to the English translation, which were then recorded and then I made a max thought using um granular synthesis and some swarm algorithms for the specialisation which then um gave form to the piece we are going to listen later. And um some of these transductions of ideas are um are the compositional technique of steering and freezing which uh two uh two elements that are involved in the poem. Um so steering, uh this idea I I brought it through the theory and tricks of cybernetics uh which takes its name as a theory of control and communication from steering a ship. So I made this analogy between Man Overboard, this moment of emergenc- emergency on s- on board as a kind of steering and sub- composing through steering a cybernetic process which is also explored by the composer Roland Kine who describes this as a self-organ- uh governing process in the studio uh as he says, which he explains as an image of stones thrown into water where certain wave movements occur and if you throw a few stones at certain intervals you will see very complex intersections and then you can take those intersections and you can use them again, putting them together into a whole that um that emerges beyond necessarily the original idea of the of the composer and this is kind of how I treated these um improvisations and uh a steering system. And actually for the specialisation I used um a s- a swarm algorithm that can be visualised like that where each point is a sound source and each point communicates with all other points except for itself and um the x y coordinates are mapped to to space um while the colour represents an internal phase of its um point. And in the piece the internal phase uh was controlling the granulation, the the position of gran- of granulation um and there are seven groups of seven granular streams that are moving around the space uh where I didn't necessarily control the movement, but I interacted with it um like uh this process of steering a cybernetic process. And the other technique was freezing, um inspired by these frozen landscapes described by Erzis Soteropu Soteropoulos in Our Communication and initially I was thinking of using the my guitar freeze pedal, but then it was maybe too frozen and I wanted to have um to have a process where even if it's drowning it's still creaking. Um and that was inspired by some pieces like Ringerang by Barry Truax uh um Music for Tandra by Eting Haker and Liman by Kamaru and Ahasan. And yeah, so returning to the title uh Seven Thirths and One Long Sound Signals which is the sign of general emergency in the boat. Uh and while I was composing this piece there was um Flatila Mandolin was going to Palestine and and I was kind of thinking also about that and resonating with you know these people who are actually pointing towards the the drowning which in this case metaphorically can be said about the Palestinians and going through a genocide and I kind of wanted to make this piece as a kind of space to think about these kind of issues specifically about who is drowning at the moment. Um and yeah, I take I took this idea from Max Richter who speaks about a piece of music as a place to think about humanitarian uh crisis and other issues. And uh with that said, I can start playing and but also I want to remind, thinking is always embodied, so if you feel like moving and changing position feel free to do whatever you want to do with that piece. That's it. So.
Any comments, any questions, anyone?
I was wondering why I missed the very beginning, so you might have already said this, why you had one, two, three, four, five, six six or seven cycles of kind of way is are they meant to replicate ways passing through that?
I Yeah, so it was um the whole composition is based on this i on the title actually. So the title is this symbol and I was kind of using it uh also as a kind of fractal form.
Mm-hmm.
So there's one drone made of seven sections, each of which is made of uh seven groups of seven voices etcetera. So yeah.
Okay. And there are moments in it where it there are some fantastic moments in it, and it's quite a longitudinal piece. I noticed that you didn't use the spatialisation that much as like as like as in case loss. There are only times a few times when I noticed it behind me. What was the thinking to not have such um so much not much panning around? Yeah.
Yeah, it was I used um a swarming algorithm for the specialization, so it's always centered.
Mm-hmm.
And because it's so dense, there's always something kind of balancing overall the gravity towards the centre. Um yeah, and this is kind of giving form to the whole piece, so there was no sections where it's focusing more locally at any points. I tried to do this uh a bit like using the console at some moments, but yeah, the the whole piece is designed um I have a little so this is a kind of um the algorithm that I'm using, so you see it's always fluctuating around the centre.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um um I don't have a perfect pitch, but uh I think that the the whole piece is predominantly in a key and it was in the key of A, I think. Uh it was that intentional or or just uh if um it just happened by default because of you of a musical background or what?
So I um the material is um is based on some um pre- improvisation um sessions and um it wasn't my choice, but it was with a group of musicians and there were no good trends, so it happened to be uh this um
'Cause all the harmonic references and harmonies and whatever it it were in A key, they were in I think A key of A.
Yeah, it 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 happened that the the musicians chose to play because each section is based on one fragment of improvisation.
Hmm.
And each one is around um thirty forty seconds and they tend to be quite um not harmonically dense in a sense there are no like there were no fast changes, so it happened to
Hmm. Okay.
Dumb question. Um it's kind of it's hard not to notice that uh it's like really hot in here. So so it's a bit like watching a kind of film like Shackleton or Scott, you know, and they're you know they're in a freezing condition, but someone's turning the heating light up. So what I don't, you know, the experience, the kind of s as a kind of s a kind of sentience experience of this work, uh you can't, you know, our our emotions obviously talk to each other and I wonder what this piece feels like if it were really cold, you know.
Yeah.
I was thinking that as well, like I felt like I was in a volcano rather than in the water, which was interesting.
Yeah.
I felt water definitely around me in this one. When to me this piece has thi this kind of quality where it feels static, it moves all the time but it feels static.
Mm.
Mm.
It is a duration, of course, where where you you can actually lose yourself in the in the piece. Uh but but it has this kind of feeling like you are in a in a container which everything moves inside it, but it is static in in its own bubble. So it it certainly felt to me like being in water.
Mm.
And almost drowning, I don't know, it it was all this kind of uh movement that you that you have in there.
Yeah.
The spectral movement rather than spatial movement, the spectral movement that you have in there.
Mm. Yeah, but the staticness and flow, I was thinking of uh you know glaciers, we maybe perceive them as a kind of static
Mm.
monolithic uh entity. But yeah, maybe shifting scale, it also is something that flows and I was trying to to make this the map, but as a
Mm.
complex freezing, like using a granular freezing, but using the steering steering the swarm as a kind of
Mm.
between this kind of static freezing and always flowing, so.
And it felt like a very big object because of the the low frequencies that you have.
Yeah, yeah.
So the glacier is it was definitely present, yeah.
Yeah.
It 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 definitely does contain, uh but I think if you're aiming for that circulation and coming to centre, that's what contains us. I think that's what's making it as static, it's probably has been. So I think in a way it makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
Mm.
Yeah.
If if you have flow, you're right, and those two ideas would ultimately
Mm-hmm.
in work, it has to be.
Yeah, and I want this kind of to be in the middle of this kind of almost drowning but floating kind of feeling.
It has to be.
And duration seems, it was quite long duration, but but it feels like this it's a big scale, you know, it's a big scale thing you're exploring, it seems to enter into that scale, maybe the duration.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that. Yeah, some compositions that I was uh inspired by, like Roland Penn's, some of his work are hours long, but I wanted something big, but also uh yeah, the duration also comes from this reference of it all comes back to this symbol somehow. But um
Mm.
I was inspired by this mean like um music style, I guess, how you that uh this eight hundred percent slower, you know about that, like using Paul Ekstra algorithm uh stretch algorithm to for pop songs and somehow apparently the eight hundred times slower is the the golden percentage for that and like SoundCloud and YouTube videos of pop songs and like So I used this kind of scale compared to the initial fragments, so that's the relation between the improvisation fragment with the its section. So that's why.
Did you actively think about time scale then? Because there's obviously like the human time scale, like how we might perceive time. And then also the time of the environment around us and the glaciers. That's something they're in their own time, aren't they, but it still affects us and then, you know, and that kind of everything's connected. So I was kind of interested in the time scale and also
Yeah.
that choice of the swarm formation as well, because I think maybe it's a little more like a um an elastic network where everything is connected to everything else, everything is affecting everything else. So the fact that a um
Mm-hmm.
uh an iceberg might carve itself, um it it doesn't just happen by itself, like factors around it happen. And then that in itself affects other things, which might also affect continual global warming, for example.
Mm. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So um yeah, talk about that.
Yeah, exactly. This uh this is also what why I chose to use this uh swarm algorithm, because everything is entangled and yeah, to to maybe break this distance of, you know, in the case of experiencing the sides of the algorithm to break this distance of the kind of detached uh god I view of the world, but
Mm.
in this piece, yeah, like everything affects everything else, both in terms of position and location granular granularity, but also each granular voice is kind of affecting each other voice within this group. And uh yeah, definitely in the process of composition, I am not sure, yeah, definitely as composing this piece, I got this feeling quite a lot. Uh I hope it comes out as well. But yeah, maybe not, it doesn't arrive, I'm not um you know, at the scale, you're unable to perceive this dynamic, but maybe the direction is what I was thinking of opening this file.
I think probably to achieve a like a um a snippet point or do not mean a part much longer, it has that sense that's um the piece keeps going.
Mm.
And we are just listening to one part. And I think that's maybe you're saying about this geological time, that kind of goes beyond, you know, just you know, we got the pleasure, how to experience it and that.
Yeah, or it's like it's more of a place than, you know, a composition of linear time and maybe you can think of it as looking at the the geological straight that uh kind of captured in a sample and there's seven of them. You can see it as the yeah, I guess the geological straight of the improvisation that comes from the poem etcetera. Uh but yeah, definitely has this duration, but you can come in, you know, yeah.
There was one last thing. You um just before you started the piece, you said, you know, it's embal it's embodied, like I encourage, or if you would like, um please walk round, and none of us did, I think, mainly because it's really hot and we all rushed to get here on time. Um
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
I should like that.
But I I like I really, yeah, I am quite interested in maybe in in the kind of social, like oh whenever we should like we we're gonna be videoed as well or something. But I mean, how would you sort of ideally like to sort of perform this piece? Would you have the audience interacting with you, for example, like would you want people online to be listening? Um or is that a bonus? Or is this something that you're still working through? I'm just always curious to see if that um
I'm I'm sure, actually it came out, I rendered the yesterday, it's uh but also it's going to be performed on Tuesday, I think, in the Great Hall at Gossmith. And from what I've heard, there will be carpets on the ground instead of chairs and that's maybe my favourite ways of uh perceiving this kind of works, like being able to maybe lie down or yeah, I don't like chairs so much. That that's yeah, personally, that's the not doing the chair. Um but yeah, you know, it's it's like.
So you see this as a concert piece, like listening from the beginning to the end to the piece, or more like an installation where the piece is played somewhere, then you just go in that experience for as long as you like and then leave. And how how do you see this? See the beginning can end there?
I'm very com yeah, I'm very I'm very conflicted because uh before coming here, I was thinking of I thought I would be moving. I thought I I'm very com yeah. I'm very I'm very conflicted because uh before coming here, I was thinking of I thought I would be moving. I thought I would be but then I was um uh had a lot of fun with the mixing desk, so I didn't have the chance. But yeah, uh maybe both, maybe neither. It's not yeah, not like either or, but both could be, I was willing.
Yeah. Anyone else?
It could potentially accept some some more like sound sound effects and then some, you know, more more the ritual side, some and the material side. And I think I'm very aware of the textures around me and the environment and, you know, what this a piece should taste like, feel like in the air and, you know, the and I think there could be just so much, it could be down to the installation environment. Um you know, not just lying down, but you know, all the surfaces and the sound in this place. Then we talked about temperature.
Yeah.
Something like so much so it's I think it's kind of hard. It'd be quite quite a difficult thing to explore.
Mm, true. Yeah, it's thanks. Uh now I get yeah, I get more tired. Sure.
No, reach for time maybe. Swap each others, you know. Any other questions?
Do we have any questions online, maybe? Anything? Any comments?
Yeah, any questions?
Uh just they s they say fantastic. I'll after the scene's finished.
Oh, okay. Good.
Excellent.
Okay. Shall we have a ten minute break or fifteen minutes or whatever?
Okay. Uh yeah, let's make it ten, so we're running a a ten over.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Ten minutes break.
So twenty plus back.
Twenty, okay.
Twenty plus back.
Alright, okay. We'll be around anyway. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Gazzani. Thank you.
Can I just ask about the logical things, like
Okay.
Let's do that. Okay, good. So um I'm going to play a piece, maybe two, we'll see how it goes, okay? The first one is is called Beneath the Surface. And it was initially composed for a wave field synthesis system, so that used one hundred and ninety two loudspeakers. So this is an eight channel version of of that piece. Um so all the sounds were recorded with hydrophones in the Isle of Grail. So what you will hear is sounds from water beetles. Water beetles produce sounds through stridulation, which means that they they wrap different parts of the bodies together and they make sound like that. Uh you will hear air bubbles coming from uh from water plants through photosynthesis. You will also hear sounds from the stems of the water plants when they hit each other because of the um um water underwater current. And you'll also hear some low frequencies uh which come from two different sources. One is the um the underwater current and the other one is um uh some um industrial activity that was happening. Not very close to our source, but because the sound travels very fast um through the ground. So it came through the ground and uh into the pond as well, so um it it was captured by the hydrophones. Um so that material that I recorded there, I reworked that for um two other um sound installations, not only sound installations, but installations. And I worked um with this for um for a particular project, which was called liminal spaces. And we were five people involved in that in that project. So what we tried to do was to draw the attention to the life that was happening and the activities that was were happening in desolate spaces. So we found this kind of of ponds, the Isle of Grail, and wanted to explore that. So um there were five people, we better I better say their names as well. I'm not very good with names, I forget everything, so that's why I'm writing I've written this down. So it was La Vigna Braidon, who was a who is a film and media artist, Caroline Miller, who's a creative writer, Sarah Krask, a transdisciplinary artist, Rokt Barka, who's an environmental scientist, and and myself. So we collected different data from the area and we did a pilot project. Uh two, as I said, two installations. The first one was um exhibiting the LT twenty one on board of the ship LT twenty one when that was at Graysund. And the second one was um at the conference that we had here, a sonic cartography conference, uh that happened two years ago here at Kent. Um we had, um of course the sound, but we had um images taken with with drones and also underwater and the landscape, so straight from the landscape. So we used that and we also, I mean, we did several things. We uh also um interviewed local people and we had the responses um built on, you know, pieces of paper on walls and then we had this uh kind of installation. So what we tried to do actually was to draw the attention of uh of the of people, of lot of people, to empty spaces, sort of empty spaces, because they are occupied by different species, of course, um draw their attention to to these spaces. And we thought that the best way to do that is by doing um interdisciplinary um installations, so people can go and experience these side-specific installations as well, that they can go experience this in particular places. So we did pilot projects for that and we gathered quite a lot of data uh by taking samples from the water as well. Uh but uh all this stopped, of course, when we we learned that, you know, several departments in the university were closing down, so we we didn't continue. Uh but there is a lot of um stuff that we we gathered from that. And um yeah, this is the piece that we're going to listen to and I hope that you will enjoy.[873.88][875.72](Applause)
Is it like tarmac works or something?
Sorry?
Is it the tarmac works? The Yellow Brink, so it's got all these weird conveyor belts that go out to sea, hasn't it?
Um
From the sort of edge, the Grail coastal part, bit?
I think they were isolated, I'm not sure.
And there's the power station?
Oh, oh, you you mean the destruction, sorry.
Yeah.
Uh maybe, maybe. I thought you you meant the ponds. I don't know if they were isolated in the sea or not. Um I don't know, I could just hear it barely at the distance, but I couldn't see anything. I couldn't see anything.
But that was in its own niche, right, in the spectrum?
Do you think because of your spectral visuals, your composition became also visual, like which is composing visually?
In in a lot of sense, yes, yes, you're right there, yeah. Because otherwise, I mean, you can hear the differences, but it becomes so much apparent when you see something in front of you. So you can actually grab it, cut it, paste it and do all that.
But do you think when you are also, from grabbing, you are also composing, composing efficiently because we are actually in potential?
Yeah, 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 that happened, yeah, absolutely.
It's a very boring question. Um do you use the Aqua Beat mics or JRF French mics or?
JRF, JRF mics, yeah.
Because Aqua Beats was, I could recommend them because they're really good for really high-frequency small stuff.
Yes, yeah.
Um
The one by
Jazzis one's not so good, I mean, I'm not good, I mean, if I've tried them and compared them, I found Jazzis one is still like not so good at the high-frequency stuff, but uh um
It grabbed all the frequency area that I was interested in anyway, so I didn't find any problems there. It was not something that I expected, you know, a scientific response from the microphones that I could use. So for the purposes that I needed, the microphones for, they were absolutely fine.
Can I ask a question about the, so when you originally prepared this work, it was for a much wider system and it was specifically in mind the general public or the locals to that particular area to come and listen?
For the locals, yes.
Yeah.
We had that in mind.
So I'm really interested to know what they had to say. Because for me, like, listening, excuse me, listening to your piece, it felt quite humbling because it was a little bit like Constantinople. It decentered me a little bit. It made me think about all of these worlds that we, you know, in our generally, general everyday, we don't think about. I mean, actually, I do think about them quite a lot, but, so maybe everyone has those. But I feel like, you know, kind of your creative interpretation, or even a scientific one, would, you know, they open up so many other worlds, very obviously. So I'm really curious to know what the general public, who might not have had experience of hydrophone listening or hearing a hundred-odd speaker system in their local area, what they were thinking about that and listening to insects and plants?
Yes, well, they didn't expect to be that much activity underwater, definitely. And they didn't, they didn't expect to hear sounds coming from insects, for example, or things like that. So it was something entirely new to them, so they were, let's say, amazed or surprised or...
I would say one that, like, was, so because you made this piece, did you have in mind that you wanted to sort of create work? Because you wanted to get the attention of the locals within, you know, their wider environment, looking around and paying attention. Did you want them to then work with that stuff and respond, or that was maybe related to you?
We had several ideas on how to continue the project, but they never materialized. So departments completely disappeared here at the university, so we stopped it. We had in mind to do something much bigger than this because we collected data that we wanted to use to make a, at least a sound installation that would involve many senses. So not only visual or only oral, so we wanted to involve more senses. And this is why we have this kind of group together with scientists. We have people working with visuals and other, that were interested in having each other, other who are interested in language. So all this stuff would come together at the end. Just in a...
If anyone's online or in the room, if you would like, in a good context. There was, there was something melodic in that piece to a certain extent. I kind of, you know, there was no melody, obviously. There was no, kind of, compositional thing, but there was, to a certain extent, it felt like an orchestra.
Yeah, there wasn't a melody in the Western sense, but there was a melody in terms of, you know, this world that exists there. So I still see that as a melody, but in a different sense, of course. But it's not just a amalgamation of sounds, different sounds together. It's something, when I hit it back, because I had it too many times, of course, to create this, once you start repeating some stuff to yourself, listening to the same things to yourself, then you create something more musical inside you. It happens with language as well, I mean, this is well researched. So if you repeat one phrase many times, at the end it becomes quite musical. So you can hear rhythm there, you can hear the melody and everything. So this happened to me with this piece and I'm sure with other people had similar experiences. So yes, I do find something musical there, definitely.
But you're resisting to make it too explicit as well, I guess. Composing it in a sense suddenly becomes a midi, like, you know, you play the jingle bells or... I'm trying to work the, you know, on that spectrum between the kind of, cagey, anarchic and controlled and...
It is a strange space because if you familiarize too much with this material, then it becomes quite special to you and then maybe you lose contact with your audience, who is going to listen to your piece for the first time, maybe. So you don't know how these people will listen to this because you have a different kind of listening when you repeat that to yourself too many times, definitely. Yeah.
And how did you think about the narrative and how did you kind of put the sequence of events?
I didn't think about the narrative. I just had the recordings too many times. I mean, it was not, this was only 10 minutes long, but the recording is about an hour and a half, continues. So I listened to that many times and I just cut and paste the different areas, which I found more interesting for some reason at that point.
So the material kind of informed the...
And for the installations, the two installations I told you about, it was not exactly the same material. Similar, but not exactly the same. So I took from different points of the recording and I think the installations, with the others, the installations.
I mean, in a lot of ways, it is playing with a language that you don't know what the meaning of that language is. Or a partial language, sort of the insects and plants that communicate in more than just sound. But I quite like the idea of creating a sonic poetry out of it, I think. Like, that's a complete valid statement, say that it's a sonic poetry. You're not collaborating necessarily, no, I mean, not quite yet.
What we tried to do as well, now that you mentioned some point, we tried to incorporate language in there as well at some point, but we didn't like the result. So we had people talking at the same time, but the material didn't actually let itself for this kind of interaction of, you know, human voice and this kind of material. So we just dropped it. But we had some people talking about that area and also ourselves saying the names of different species that exist in that area, but as I said, it didn't work, so we discovered. Instead, we had this kind of pitch notes around for the installations, which worked okay, we thought.
I need to know if someone might comment on this as well. I was just, I'm trying to think, I think about this spatial, how we felt spatially. Especially after Constantinople, is what we talk about, the company and the things. This felt more like a field, you know, like a kind of fluid field of events which you orchestrated.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was kind of, that's how at the moment I feel that's in my mind or in my body in a way.
Good. Anything else, maybe?
No, I don't think so.
What do you think, shall we hear another piece or not? The other one is 10 minutes before John's piece, okay? Is that, would you like that? Yeah, okay, fine. Before I play, I'll just read very quickly the program notes, which I think will make sense directly, so I don't have to speak to say too much about it. It's called Wetlands, okay? That piece is called Wetlands. I composed that in 2021. That was composed for Fifth Order Ambisonic, so that was for 36 channels initially. And this is an eight-channel version of that ambisonic version that I had. So, program notes. Wetlands are transition zones, also known as ecotones, between dry land and aquatic environments. Urban wetlands may add anthropogenic pressure because of the proximity of human activity to the natural ecosystems. This composition explores a dialogue between sounds living, moving and interacting in those spaces, creating also tension and release moments when these meet with human-made noise and activity. All sounds live in a cooperative coexistence, even during the most intense moments in this sonic world. The composition is based on field recordings of urban wetlands around the city of Valdivia in Chile. The original raw recordings were provided by the Soundscape, eh, Sound Labs, sorry, Sound Labs Research Team, who commissioned this composition. And the Wetlands, this piece is published by Green Recorder. So, did we play that without saying anything else? And maybe then you have any comments when you find that advanced, there you are. So it has to do with water again, so I'm not completely out of context. So it has to do with water again, so I'm not completely out of context.
Have nothing to say about this piece, anyway, it's coming to be a piece that speaks for quite terribly, but, eh, it's supposed to mean,
I read with the problem of noise, I mean, everything is competing.
It's a beautiful work as well.
Thank you.
Did you say where the sound was from? Where did you record it?
I didn't record it, I received recordings, which were raw recordings, from Chile.
Ah, yes.
And I, I got recordings and, eh, there were many ambisonic recordings as well there. So I had to isolate stuff, there was a lot of noise in the recordings initially. Eh, so apart from that, I mean, I isolated part that I liked. I mean, at some point you, you can hear some drumming. That was, you know, tribal drums that were happening somewhere there, but they were so distant. And to isolate this in, in, you know, among all the noise, it was a feat by itself to do that. But, eh, yeah, you know, I completely enjoyed doing this, yeah.
Do you find that you have a different relationship with the material or the kind of processing that you might do if you don't sort of remember recording itself?
Yes, well, the, the first thing that I, I needed to do to actually, um, understand the material better was to, eh, isolate stuff, to, to listen, first of all, listen as it is, eh, quite a few times. And then just isolate stuff that I thought that I could use for a composition. And then I, I had maybe one or two points where I had the, the entire, eh, recording as a background of what was happening. But, apart from the noise, eh, but, eh, yeah.
What was the noise, but?
Um, there was, there was traffic noise, definitely. Eh, but I can't remember what, what else. Eh, wind, wind, a lot of wind. Yeah, wind was more prominent than traffic noise, maybe that was distant or something like that.
Now you have to make a recording of all the things that you've moved. I make it all that once, it's a toilet.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yeah. I like what is noise that I take out from other, eh, recor-, from, from recordings that's, I want, I want some things to keep them clean, but I like the dirty thing as well, that is left behind. Let's, let's go with that, yeah, yeah.
I still can't help but think about this in a kind of compositional way, you know, I mean, I like, if you were listening to, um, your masters, you know, there's a lot of drama in it.
Yeah.
You know, it's quite strong, it's actually kind of, um, falling on violent at times, but not, not crossing off that you're not really, just sort of falling.
Yeah. It is about dominance at some points, but it is about collaboration, cooperation as well. Um, yeah. All right. Shall we have a drink?
Yeah, let's get out of this.
Yes. Another ten minutes, ten minutes, and then bye-bye. Thank you.
So I'm going to present stepping on the Dreams of Euclid. This is the kind of, and this is a piece that's still, it's evolving, different versions of it. This is a kind of a version of a piece I created for a memorial event for Tim Robinson, for Emma, so Gallery 11 in Dublin, which was a couple of years ago now. A piece is like a homage, is how you say it in English? You look at homage, do you? Homage to Tim Robinson, who was an uncle of mine. He's Tim Driever Robinson, and he actually used the name Timothy Driever. Just, I'll give you a quick, quick, you probably don't know who he is, so, some of you do a little bit. But in 1960s, oh, where do I start? I don't, didn't spend too long talking about him, I could spend all day. He's a really interesting person. Okay, well quickly, he's from Ilkley. His mother was Scottish on my side, from near Glasgow. And he studied mathematics in Cambridge, then went to London in the 60s and tried to be an artist. In fact, actually before then, he studied, he actually worked in Vienna in Turkey. So he did a bit of a journey before he went to kind of London. But he was kind of trying to develop a kind of practice as an artist. And was part of that kind of really interesting scene in the kind of mid 60s. And was involved in the Listen Gallery, really at the very, at the stage of the Listen Gallery open right at the beginning. And was involved in very interesting shows, including people like Gustav Metzger, probably some of you knew. And he struggled being an artist in London and basically gave it all up. He kind of hated the art world of London and went to the west coast of Ireland. And this is kind of potted history, but he walked a lot, he was a kind of walking artist, I guess, a bit like Richard Law. So did a lot of walking and he used the ordnance survey maps as he walked around that part of the west coast of Ireland and the Aran Islands and the Byron. And by using this map, he realised that, well, there's a problem with the map. The map was made by the, actually the British Army a hundred years earlier. So it's a British map of an Irish-speaking part of the world. And place names just weren't the place names. So he took it upon himself to actually collect the original place names just by walking, either walking or cycling. And went around this huge part of, every stone, every part of the coastline, every rock, he collected its story, its lore, its Irish place name, just by talking to these people. This is that time when this is a very uncool thing to do. No, it's like, no, that's like, yeah, that's of course, let's go and do that. But then it was like, why, there's no interest in this at all. But he, and because he was English, going around this coast of that part of the world, it's also pretty extraordinary. And then kind of found a home in Roundstone, which is in Connemara, right at the end of the coast. And he ended up living in this house here, managed to buy this house. And he lived there with Mairead Fitzgibbon and they married. And I got to know them, actually eloped, interested me. But they lived there and that's his studio at the bottom there. And he would make his maps in there and also he wrote a lot because he collected so much stuff. He could write many, many books about the place. But he's, he's one of these people who's like, the word holistic isn't right. He's interested in everything, so he's interested in the moss and the fungi and the insects and the planets and the geometrical patterns and all these things. So he's really like a kind of Renaissance man, spoke multiple languages, as did Mairead. A really quite extraordinary person, a really, you know, a brilliant person and a beautiful writer. So yeah, really interesting, interesting people. He kept himself to himself a bit, he wouldn't go up to the pub, for example, in Roundstone, he wouldn't do that kind of thing. Locally, he was a bit tricky because he stopped a lot of innovation. So at various times, they tried to build an airport in a very special area of the bog near there. And he stopped that from happening, which upset various rich people. This is the time of the Irish tiger, when there was huge development happening. And they also tried to build a marina here, which he also managed to block as well. And again, upset some very, very rich, powerful people by doing that. But thank God he did that, you know, he's kept this special place. So yeah, what else to say about him? Anyway, I got to know him quite, I mean, I always knew about him and my dad kind of kept in touch with him. But I sadly got to know him when he'd moved, he had a flat in London and him and Mairead went back to London. Because he had Parkinson's and Mairead had some other health issues, so they went back to London. Because there's some steep steps, they couldn't go up the steps and they didn't want to really, it's a stage that they couldn't live there anymore, where it's very, I mean, it must have been cold and wet the whole time. I don't know how he survived. So I looked after Tim and Mairead last couple of years and sadly he died of the very beginning of COVID, right at the beginning. But I had some amazing kind of chat system, we got to know them really well. Actually, Tim had quite a few falls and quite often I would see him in hospital and he had kind of delirium. But he was speaking like this poetry, like this pure poetry, because he had, he knew like six languages. And he was a super educated person, he kind of created his whole new, and he was like, he'd be like talking to me like completely amazed. Talking in this kind of, I wish I had recorded, it's quite unethical to record, I wish I had now. Because he was almost talking in this pure, I don't know, this pure poetry he'd somehow kind of created about his insights. And he'd actually, I've got some pictures that he drew actually while he was, he was, is that what, when he was delirious? Including one kind of geometrical pattern, which I worked on, it was actually the pattern of the linoleum on the kitchen floor, which I've actually kept now, so I've got quite a sketch of linoleum from the floor and a sketch of it, interestingly. That's why my house is full of junk, excuse me, chunks of linoleum. What else? Okay, so, I should move on. Anyway, really interesting, interesting person. Inside the house, so when he passed away, I was desperate to kind of respond as an artist. We did talk about collaborating, but it just wasn't possible. He was, and he actually did collaborate with Susan Stenger, who's a really interesting artist, a sound artist. But we did talk about working and I wish I kind of, I should have got to know him earlier. And I, once I was in, where was I? I was in Limerick and I should have just gone a little bit further. But I never got to kind of meet him in his prime sadly. So actually, I might have been in the same gallery many years before. But anyway, okay. So this piece, so how do I approach a piece, kind of responding to someone so kind of genius and amazing and interesting? Which isn't, I don't know, which is also kind of my approach as well. So this piece is made up of various things. It's particularly inspired by a painting I found in the house, this is the house here. And I would have brought the painting, but... So there he is, that's the painting I'm talking about. This is in the Listen Gallery in 1968, looking really cool. And going around the house, once the house was empty, I found it. There it is now. So it's kind of, it's still exist, in fact, Emma, Gallery 11 in Dublin, had already taken most of his paintings. And they just left that behind because they thought it was too destroyed, it was the point, they didn't want it. So this is literally at the back of, on the ground floor. And of course, Tim sold very few paintings in London in 1960, so he managed to keep them. And, but the tide were coming and the tide, it's a tide damage. Which actually, well, every like four years or something, or five years, there'd be a high spring tide and in one year, it damaged all his paintings, sadly. And so this is a kind of picture, it's just been seen as too damaged. Amazingly, I should be careful what I say there, but endless anecdotes, but quickly, I have two perfect paintings of Tim's because, as you do, I bought two of his paintings on eBay for, for, if anyone's listening, for about a thousand quid. And I didn't tell my wife and I hid them in my office at Goldsmiths for about five years. Because, you know, you don't want to spend a thousand pound on a couple of paintings. But they were, they were the name of Timothy Driever, so nobody knows who Timothy Driever is. So, but I knew it, that's Tim's work, so I bought them. And I kind of hid them in my office at Goldsmiths for ages. People like Chris would come and they'd be giant, you know, just like in the corner of my room, these huge things in there. And they were in perfect condition, okay. And in one of Tim's books, he writes about an exhibition he was going to have in 1968, in, actually in, I think in the Listen Gallery possibly, maybe another place in London. And he'd arrived and his paintings, two of his paintings called Dreams of Euclid had been destroyed by another artist in the room who'd been polishing some brass sculpture and the liquid had exploded all over the paintings. And so Tim rushed off to get some more paintings, luckily he had some more paintings. And those two paintings disappeared. And when I, and I was able to show Tim, I'd put them in a vacuum car when I got to know him really well and I took Tim, so I drove up the paintings up to his flat and had the paintings in the back, showed them to Mairead and they burst into tears saying, "These are our babies, where did you get our babies from?" So I had to, and the story is, I bought them from someone at Marleyburn who reconditioned paintings. And someone had dropped off these paintings 10 years earlier. And so they took them to recondition them, to fix them, and they were perfect. But they never came back to pick them up. And then he was able to sell them, he was allowed to sell them after 10 years or something. So I just bought them, so that's the story. So I have two perfect Tim pictures, which are quite similar, they're all kind of, so as Euclid and Stavsky, he's a mathematician, you know, because he's a mathematician, so it's in a similar vein to these. Anyway, sorry, it's digression, but I hope to make an exhibition of these pictures at some stage and I really think this should be an installation piece. Okay, so in this piece, right, so this piece, I really think that painting should be kind of sitting there in the gallery. It should be an installation piece really ultimately, so you're looking at this kind of piece. And the piece for me represents much more about kind of Tim's life actually, because I think Tim would appreciate actually the latest of these. You know, he's not, you know, he was a kind of purist mathematician, but then as his life progressed, you know, he was a very strong atheist, but also a kind of lover of nature and the power of nature and the process of nature. And when I took his, I took him in, Mairead died around the same time sadly, and I took both of their ashes several years later back to Roundstone for a special event to basically bring their ashes back to Ireland. And then I had a really special event, Michael D Higgins was there, the president of Ireland came and did an amazing speech. A really special event, lots of Irish poets, it was great. We had these Irish folk musicians from the local towns singing Irish songs. As a carick, an Irish boat took their ashes out and spread their ashes in the water, just there. The next morning, as you do, I did a hydrophone recording around the same water where the ashes had just been spread. And so this piece also has the hydrophone recordings. And, you know, I kind of think that in the recordings, you can hear their bodies are being eaten by the kelp. They're going to be brought back into that, back into the land a little bit. I think Tim and Mairead would get this, I think they'd quite like that, using the piece. It's not, it's not, yeah, I don't think it's anything dark about it. So there's that, so yeah, so in the piece you've got the kind of, you've got the hydrophone recordings back in the bay. I've got, you know, I've been making recordings of the house. That was just last weekend, but I've been back there quite a few times. So, you know, doing, she does great geophones, because the tide comes right up there. So that's if you're in a boat almost in the studio, so you can actually hear the tide kind of coming through, through the whole wall, which is really nice. So I've done a lot of recordings around that, this special house and the garden. And also in the piece, for me it was an excuse to use Goldsmiths, you know, their Devisamazing VCS4, this big unique synthesizer, which is actually made in 1968, the same year the painting was built. So I thought, sorry, the painting was built, so I thought it's kind of, maybe it's an excuse to kind of use that. And I quite like kind of the odd sounds you get from the DCS3 as well. So there's all these kind of elements in this piece, yeah. I was going to read some of this, I don't know if I talked too much, I can recommend Tim's books, he's got lots of book lists. He's a, you know, he's really an acoustic ecologist, among other things, he's a kind of an acoustic ecologist. And there's a lovely chapter in the beginning of this book where he's just listening to the house actually and listen to the memories of the house and the wind and how that kind of connects back to kind of the ancestors of the area and the territory, all these things as well. He's really a kind of deep thinker, so I really recommend his work. Robert Macfarlane says he is the greatest nature writer, if Robert Macfarlane says that. Right, let's get on, yeah, okay.
So this is an extraordinary piece of painting actually, because all the brew of one shade has to be done in one continuous procedure. All right, so you get the hard lines falling, forming in interruptions. So I learned to take a deep breath and get my pen, my brush right and start turning around that edge as if it were ticking away.
Thank you. Thanks, thanks for allowing me to use your amazing system. Thanks for coming to visit me, thanks. Thanks to James, thanks to him. It's quite interesting to do this, explore it spatially, yeah. Any comments or questions?
How many passes of the show support did you have? Have you made them all?
Oh, I've got, I've no idea. Yes, tons of, oh, tons of stuff, yeah.
It wasn't like, that wasn't live thing, it was cut up?
Oh, yeah, it is actually, well, it's kind of. Yeah, actually, it's a, it's just a couple of hours on just enjoying that joystick thing. And so it's actually a lot of that live, and yeah, enjoying looking at it all, being right, and then putting it through lots of the more filters.
With picture of the painting? Or the hat next to you?
The painting's there, yeah, not that, not that direct. But I was kind of thinking spatially.
You knew when you were playing with the synth that it was for that piece?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's an excuse to just, yeah. I wouldn't want me to synthesize a piece. How would you do that? So, yeah, it becomes more like, more, I don't know, it becomes, I don't actually, it becomes more like a a kind of material, so I like the, I like the, it gets a bit distorted, goes a bit wrong, and kind of breaks a bit, that's kind of, that's kind of like dirtiness, you know, to kind of keep some of that, it's quite nice. It's kind of, yeah, intentional.
I'm not sure I ever heard a piece of yours with, you know, such obvious synth stuff in the background. Maybe I've heard it, but I can't remember now. But it's very, very interesting. The way that you combine this with the human voice as well before that and everything, it's connected very, very nicely, I think.
Did you get that, well, he's, so this is when he was, when I showed him the paintings, when he talked, when Tim talks, it's when I arrived at these paintings. And he, Saturday, I'm lucky I was recording it, but what he did was, he kind of then, he went into this kind of trance, and he explained how he had to paint this huge circle in one go, in one breath, kind of zen-like action, he practiced many, many times. And so, so he's doing that circle, that's what the silence is, he's doing, he's drawing circles in space, really slowly, it takes about a minute and a half, ninety seconds, drawing a circle, that's what he's doing. That's that moment, he's drawing, so it's kind of for me, although the paintings, so, you know, I was just saying earlier, the quite algorithmic is painted through, like, you know, you could recreate them, you could get, you know, the geometry, you know, you could recreate them exactly, but for him it's actually embodied, it's like, and he had these giant campuses and so on, but they're very much, he has to, you know, his body is there in making paintings.
Sometimes it's good, waiting for it to get out, it's good.
I quite like to create installations where it's just the, it's just the geophone and the way he's listening to the house, actually, it's a different piece, it just does that. So you could go into this space and just feel it all through the, into the wood. It's a kind of future project.
I'm kind of thinking a lot about the kind of percolation, like, the house is porous, because he has memories of the house, he's listening to the house, to the house, and also at the same time in that work, he can hear the environment around the house, you know, it's not, we say house, landscape, scene, actually, it's all, it's all connected, isn't it? Like, there was a separation, there was water in the walls, there was water in the paintings, there was water in the breath. So I'm thinking a lot about that in that work. I don't know if you want to talk a little bit more about sort of like, actually, I can't put it into a question that would be very interesting, I just, yeah, I was thinking, making a program.
Yeah, maybe you're right, the forest, yeah, the house is a forest, and he's kind of porous too.
Well, it's a, it's a, like, he is a vessel, the house is a vessel, the house is a body, he is the body, was a body, and now is maybe even brought back to the house if the waves brought some of him in, in memory, back, you know.
Yeah, yeah, nice.
There's something, okay, I can't blame it. Same problem. But there's something geometrical in that piece, in yours, not in respect of composition, but more, you know, Tim's piece, his painting, he's kind of quite minimal, quite, you know, there's surfaces and angles. And I think that piece feels in similar way, there are like geometries within it.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Yeah, well, that's, that's, this synthesizer that I was playing with, it's a very early synthesizer, and it's sine waves, and it's square waves, and you can filter them through and make, and ring modulation, you can make them distorted, it's kind of...
The variation of that synthesizer is, feels quite, do you know, like, feels like that, or feels like painting a surface across.
I actually felt some stations when I heard the sounds of the synths. Like, I'm not particularly like music, I can't speak about it in musical terms, but I can speak about it in sensory terms, and when I was listening to what it was, the synths, or the sounds that you've taken from the synths, I felt like I was getting brush strokes through my body, not necessarily colored, but like, there was certainly a texture, as if someone was like painting a wall with a brush. And it certainly had an arc to it, and that was my sensation of some of those things. And maybe that was, maybe you had a similar experience as well, or was there more about like how it was...
It's like a difference, because it was like a flat effect, you know, like, I'm coming from a painting in China, and you can, you know, you can build things with lots of textures and, you know. Yes, and this was like a sort of, you know, more, I didn't, I don't mean that it didn't have a texture, but it felt like a geomet, you know, more like the geometrical paintings.
Yeah, good, yeah. Yeah, I think that's quite, kind of like, it's not like I was sitting looking at the painting, but thinking of those kind of gestures and those movements.
Yeah, you also move it slow and drag it.
Yeah.
You also talked about using a joystick for that? Maybe some of the motions, you know, came like that with your...
Yeah, the joystick allows you to be really subtle, you have to really subtly shift stuff, it's really nice. This ancient machine can speak really well.
Maybe the brush strokes just imitate it, or you imitate it, maybe without even knowing the brush strokes with that?
I mean, what I want to do, if I, you know, like I said, some kind of multi, wonderful, you know, if a piece was in a gallery, I would spend ages doing some kind of proper surround sound mix. I'd spend ages drawing in spatial movements. It's a stereo, isn't it, you know, but actually, you know, but actually draw in lots of spatial movements, kind of doing what the painting does. I mean, that ended up being too much, you know, but to really try to, but then, we're not, famously, as I say, we're not owls. I mean, it seems so exactly like a kind of geometrical wave.
You get this sense of movement, it doesn't have to be surround, you get this sense of movement in stereo as well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Did you represent the sort of patina, the breakdown of the painting in your...
Kind, yeah, yeah, it's kind of there, yeah. Yeah, I mean, yeah. Well, I mean, sorry, I'm answering, I better do it, does it, I tried, I tried to.
I just felt that those sort of basing bits, this sort of flow of things, came in at some point, and I was like...
Well, that's the geophone stuff, it's like huge, huge low frequency.
Ah, okay.
You know, there's some distortion, actually. But, you know, yeah, so it's kind of, the patina is trying to, or the rust of the patina is trying, you know, or the mold, that's kind of...
Was the painting stored in the room where you took the geophones photos?
In the back of that room.
Yeah, so and the actual...
Right, right, the back, behind, behind a kind of fridge, yeah.
And what came in through that?
Oh, yeah.
What was that smell like?
Oh, nice, actually, yeah. And their book collection is extraordinary, that's reading room. And I can show you pictures of it, which is covered in, because the house has been there for ten years, and the books are, it's an amazing collection, the books are completely covered in this white stuff, it's like an experiment. In fact, I've got a colleague, I've got sent Robert Macfarlane, Robert Macfarlane's books, it's become this kind of, it's become porous, too. Eaten by the ocean, by the Atlantic, yeah. It's sad as well.
I'd love to hear Tim's words. I'd love to hear Tim's words.
Yes, yeah, I'm so glad I have that, yeah. Yeah, it's just a, it's a bit cheeky recording. And really annoying, he starts talking about the paintings, and he's really into it, and then the health visitor or something suddenly appears in the door. So this amazing discussion suddenly cut off, and he's talking about his mundane stuff, about, you know, struggling with various things.
Well, maybe we shouldn't separate the mundane from the miraculous, maybe do that both at the same time.
Well, I need to make a bit, because I've got two amazing outcomes there, with the other one, I need to make a bit, so. I've got a similar recording of him talking about Zepplin flying over Glasgow in the nineteen forties or something, before the war. And he felt the Zep in his spine, maybe. And that was the last time he talked, I think, which, I've never, interesting character. Yeah, dagger, I gave a shit tweet, yeah. Too many tweets. Grace, what's the plan, Larry?
Any questions online, actually, maybe you can check it out.
We have come up, some of the plan library have repeated.
Oh, good.
I grabbed that piece, knowing that you're one of the world.
He was great friends with John Moriarty, do you know who that is? Any Irish people, so John Moriarty was like a, he was, I mean, if you turn on Irish radio, I mean, Ireland's like, not Britain, obviously. You know, culturally, it's so different, and you turn on the radio, and John Moriarty is like this weird religious philosopher, poet guy. Then nobody understood what he was talking about. Tim and John Moriarty were great friends, but I can't believe an atheist and a Catholic, he's famous, kind of religious, kind of flotter thinker, but he grew up. They were great friends, it was kind of, I don't know, how are you talking about it? No, it's quite, quite interesting how it works, but he was, but Tim would say about nature, that it's like, it's, believing in God is like, you know, how dare you? I mean, nature is already, it's so extraordinary, why do you need God, why do you need to create something else? Because it's already so, it's just infinitely complex and wonderful and beautiful and amazing, why are you now creating another, creating some fictional thing on top of that? That's what he would say, and he's quite famous about talking about this, you know, talking to atheists. I don't know why I believe, yeah.
Right, shall we...
Talking about God in the middle of the afternoon, so I think should...
Shall we begin closer to today's event? Well, thank you very much, everyone who came, and those of you who attended online, thank you so much. The next master event will be at some point next year, and probably it will be the last one, I'm sorry to say. But when is the next event of the network?
We have something on, is it next Monday, twenty-third?
Twenty-third.
Aisha Koclu and Brandon... Aisha Kalkul and Brandon Lobel are doing something at Goldsmiths and the Research Garden. Um, there are still tickets, unfortunately it's only in person for that one. No one likes one.
Where's that?
Twenty-third.
Oh, G.
G.
That's fine. Great, thank you very much, and bye-bye.